Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming to this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, please, would you please stand for the invocation which will be given by Councilman Dr. Curtis Edmonds Sr., and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Edmonds.
Gracious God our Father, we thank you for another day's journey. We thank you for coming together to discuss and hear about the business of one of the greatest cities in the world. Be with us now in our dialogue as we listen intently and as we share with one another. Help us to be civil in everything that we do tonight, and we give you praise, glory, and honor, for it's in Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen. (inaudible)
Madam Clerk?
Seven members of City Council present.
Okay. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September 22nd, 2014, a call meeting of September 23rd, 2014, and a regular meeting of September 23rd, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
With adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. The minutes are adopted, seven zero.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speakers podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. While speakers have the opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. Public Hearing, 14-384. Public Hearing on Use Permit and Rezoning Applications. Item A, UP 1411, Parkview. Rochelle Scott requests a use permit for a child daycare center in a single-family residence at 1028 Blair Street. The property is zoned Historic Residential (HR). The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends mixed-use residential. Vision principle: lifelong learning community and neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and Ms. Scott is available if council has questions.
Okay. And before you start, let me recognize, we've got several of our school board members here, elected officials, I would like to recognize and thank them as always for coming. I see our Chairman, James Bridgford. I see Ms. Lynda Rodenauer, Reverend Joseph Fleming, and Laurel Armstrong. Thank you very much for coming. And Claude Purnett, Mr. Purnett, and Costello Williams, and I think we've got them all. Ted Lamb, thank y'all very much for coming, and as always, you're welcome. Okay. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. This first item on your agenda is a request of Rochelle Scott to operate a daycare center for up to 12 children in her home at 1028 Blair Street, which is in the Parkview Historic On your right is the existing zoning map. The zoning is Historic Residential. On the left is a photograph of her residence. Ms. Scott has been licensed to take care of up to five children since 2002, and in 2009, she was issued a license by the Department of Social Services to keep up to 12 children. And one of the things that Department of Social Services did in just beginning this year is ask for local verification that they're permitted, and so now she's going through the process of getting the local approvals for her facility. The pictures on the screen are the surrounding residences. Gives you an idea of the surrounding neighborhood. This is a plot plan of her property, and highlighted in red is what we refer to as the vehicle use area or the pavement. The parking that's required for this facility is up to three parking spaces. She has sufficient space off-street for as many as four. The Planning Commission considered this item at their meeting and recommended approval five to nothing with four conditions which are in your packet. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
And Ms. Scott is here, should you have questions for her.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 1411. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 1411. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
With adoption.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item B, UP 1412, Old Town. Dawn Richardson requests a use permit to operate a bed and breakfast inn with three guest rooms at 497 North Street in the Old Town Historic District. The property is zoned Historic Residential and is designated as mixed-use downtown on the Generalized Future Land Use Map in the city's comprehensive plan. Vision principle: neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call, and Ms. Richardson is here and available if you have questions.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, again, my name is Jonathan Hartley. This is a request of Dawn Richardson to operate a three-bedroom bed and breakfast at 497 North Street in the Old Town Historic District. On the right is the zoning map. Again, this is, the entire area is zoned Historic Residential. On the left is a photograph of the front of the house. This is a five-bedroom house that was built in 1898. The bed and breakfast rooms would be on the first floor and the second floor, and also on the second floor are the resident and owner's rooms. And you have a floor plan in your packet if you need to refer to that. Historically, there have been as many as four bed and breakfasts in the Old Town Historic District. I think only three have been operating at any given time. Currently, there's only one in operation, and that's the Glenco Inn Bed and Breakfast. These are pictures of the surrounding properties at the corner. And then pictures of the parking lots that would serve this property. There are parking requirements within the bed and breakfast regulations. They're required to have up to five parking spaces. They've actually secured parking passes from the Parking Authority for six passes to serve the residents and the guests at the facility. You have in your packet also the extensive list of requirements and regulations for a bed and breakfast. People are only allowed to say 14 consecutive days and only allowed to serve breakfast, and a fairly lengthy list of restrictions that they have to operate under. With that, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this request, five to nothing with the conditions listed in your packet, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments there? All right. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 14-12. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 14-12. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item CZ 14-02, Downtown. Request of the City of Portsmouth Economic Development Authority to rezone approximately 3.5 acres on the northeast corner of Effingham Street and Lincoln Street from downtown D1, Sub-District T5 to general mixed-use with conditions to accommodate redevelopment of the property for commercial uses. The property is designated as mixed-use employment on the Generalized Future Land Use Map in the city's comprehensive plan. These properties are addressed as 1711, Effingham Street, and 710 Lincoln Street. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Okay. John?
Once again, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, my name is Jonathan Hartley. This is a request of the Portsmouth Economic Development Authority to rezone 3.5 acres. It is currently zoned D1 in the Sub-District T5, and that designation was established back in 2010 with the adoption of the new zoning ordinance and the new downtown district. What's proposed is to take these properties to GMU, which is our general mixed-use district. As you heard in your work session, this property is part of the ABEX Superfund Site, and I think you were briefed by the city engineer on what the issues are and the fact that there are permits required for any activities in these areas. What is proposed here is, first of all, the property is highlighted in yellow, and it's just south of Fire Station Number One. And this is a picture of the property. Just on the left is the fire station. And then the top photo is the full fire station, and across the street you have a number of single-family residences primarily all along Effingham Street on the west side of the Part of this proposal includes building a Dollar General store, and the generalized site plan for that is on the left, and then the overall development plan is on the right of this slide. There are three parcels. One would be for Dollar General, which does not require any other formal approvals by either council or the Planning Commission. The corner lot on Lincoln and Effingham is proposed for a 7-Eleven, and the Planning Commission just considered that item, and you'll be getting it in a future meeting. And then the third parcel is undecided. It's still available if anybody's interested in acquiring that piece, and that fronts on Lincoln. As I said, part of this proposal is a Dollar General. We've discussed at length the appearance of the building and the layout. They have agreed as proffers, as part of the rezoning, to have the Dollar General look essentially as it is in this rendering. This is a bit more upscale than what they typically build, and so we think it's a positive addition to the Effingham Street corridor. There are a number of proffered conditions. First and foremost is compliance with the ABEX ordinance, essentially the document that city engineer introduced you or reacquainted you with at your work session. Ensuring suitable access to Henry Street, or what was Henry Street, which was closed by City Council a number of months ago. A traffic impact study before either the 7-Eleven or the third parcel is developed. And then essentially, a proffer of this basic building design as their design guide for construction. The Planning Commission considered this proposal and recommended approval five to nothing at their last meeting with the conditions that are in your packet. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
On the convenience stores, and I don't know if Dollar General sells beer or alcohol, I think they do, but this has come up in the past, and it's strictly a volunteer program, but the selling of single units of beer. Always think it's good if those things aren't sold. I think it's better for the community. Have we addressed that and asked the applicants their feelings on that and see if they would voluntarily support that proffer?
We have not discussed that with Dollar General. I don't believe Dollar General sells alcohol, as a general rule.
Obviously, if they don't, that's no problem, but...
Otherwise, I have to defer to the city attorney on the issue of single cans, single servings.
But I know the 7-Eleven does, and I was recently at the Cavalier Civic Club meeting, and that issue came up, and comes up with a lot of civic clubs when they have a convenience store that's going to be located in close proximity to, not only to civic leagues, but also to churches. And I just think it ends up being a better operation and better for the community if we could voluntarily get them to limit the sales of single-unit cans or bottles of beer.
I'm not sure I can answer one way or the other with that.
And not asking, you know, for answer tonight, but by the second reading, I would like to have some feedback on that.
Yeah. Because I understand your concern there, and I think the larger issue here is to making sure we're consistent with everyone in that business and not having someone holding to a standard that someone others down the street or up the block is not, because then it puts somebody at an unfair advantage, so...
Well, and that's why it's been voluntary.
Yeah, right.
We've had cases where convenience stores have voluntarily, Elizabeth, you probably recall that, and Marlene, you recall that too. And I don't think we could legislate that. I don't think we need another law, but if they would voluntarily get on board with it, I just think it enhances their reputation and their relationship with the community, as well as the faith community.
Mr. Moody, you've pretty well summed it up. It's a voluntary program. It's been a longstanding practice of the City Council to request and strongly urge that applicants voluntarily restrain themselves or not sell single containers, but the city's hands are tied in terms of an ordinance. I believe Norfolk has special legislation, but the rest of the state doesn't, and so we're bound by whatever the ABC Board puts in its license. If there are objections to any type of activity involving a license, then the time to seek some sort of mandatory compliance or mandatory conditions is when they get their license through the ABC Board. But we can certainly, staff can certainly ask them to consider that as part of their good neighbor attitude towards new development and towards getting along with their neighbors in the community.
And to the applicant's credit, at the Civic League meeting I was at, they certainly seemed to understand that, and I think were willing to at least listen to that side of it, and they certainly real interested in fostering a good relationship with the community in which they reside. So that's all I ask, Mayor.
Very good. Dr. Edmonds?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like for you to reiterate, what's located on the other corners and proximity of where that is?
Well, at this point, there is nothing on the corner of Lincoln and Effingham. That is proposed as a 7-Eleven, which will be coming to you for their use permit with gas and convenience store. The corner of Green Street and Lincoln, which is going east towards Court Street and so on, that presently is a vacant site. It was originally designed for a small, I'll say, a fast food, like a Taco Bell or something like that, but at this point, there's nobody interested in that parcel. So the key corner site, though, is proposed, 7-Eleven has made a proposal for a use permit for that property, so...
And the other three on the intersection are all residential, on the other side of Effingham and on the other side of Lincoln. Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z1402. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item Z1402. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
Adoption. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item DZ1405, Simonsdale Subdivision. Randy Leitner requests a rezoning to allow for a reception facility addition to an existing structure on the property at 5100 Portsmouth Boulevard. The property is currently zoned High Density Urban Residential. The proposed zoning is neighborhood mixed-use. The Comprehensive Plan's Generalized Future Land Use Map recommends a mixed-use corridor. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, this, it's probably beneficial to go through a little bit of the history of this property. This property, prior to 2010, was zoned OR75, which was really an office and residential district. And under that former zoning, this building, the building on this property was constructed as a bank. It is now operated essentially as a crematory for Sturtivan Funeral Home, and they have their main funeral home facility across the street. In 2010, the property ended up being zoned urban residential high-density, which no longer allows funeral homes, crematories, et cetera, and so they are requesting to rezone the property to essentially allow the use that's already there and to add an addition, about 1,600 square foot addition, as a reception facility for both the funeral home and the crematory facility that Sturtivan operates there. So what you have is essentially a formal bank building, zoned URH with urban residential. Behind it, you'll notice that there is some general mixed-use and neighborhood mixed-use just down the block from this. These are the residences to the north and then to the east. You've got two pictures on the bottom, and then views to the south and west as well, single-family and multifamily residential. The green on this graphic depicts the existing building. The red is the addition that they're proposing, again, as a reception facility for both the funeral home and the crematory. And then the blue area is the parking that would be provided to the facility.
Will they need to increase in their parking because of the addition, or they've got enough already?
They already have enough, so they don't need to really increase the parking. Really, most of the land disturbing activity will actually be in the construction of the addition.
Okay.
They will have to go, they probably will have to go through site plan process, though, and make sure that they comply with all of the city requirements in order to build the addition. And the last photograph is the parking lot itself. There are a number of conditions recommended with this, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval with a 5-0 vote, and with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you. Any question? All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item Z1405. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward. You will have up to five minutes to speak on item Z1405. Members of City Council, this public hearing is closed.
With adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is approved, seven zero. Item EUP14-14, Victory Village. Request of Laurie Tucker for a use permit to construct a 7-Eleven convenience store with gasoline sales on the northeast corner of Greenwood Drive and Victory Boulevard, as referenced as 3500 Victory Boulevard. The property is designated in a mixed-use employment area on the future land use map in the city's comprehensive plan. Vision principle: a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have speakers.
Good evening. As the evening goes on, I become less and less formal.[1665.21][1665.21](Laughter) This is the last item that I have for this evening. It is a proposal for a use permit to build a 7-Eleven at the corner of Greenwood and Victory Boulevard. The existing site is highlighted in yellow, and on that site today is a convenience store that used to sell gas. It had pumps out on the corner. Those pumps have been taken out. There's also a used car sales facility on the property. And then the large building just to the north or above the yellow spot is commonly referred to as the Red Barn or the Red Flea Market. This is a slightly wider view. The site under discussion tonight for the use permit is the Yellow Star. You have in the general vicinity, TCC, the Portsmouth campus of Tidewater Community College, Bydewee Golf Course, and the Newport Community, as well as Victory Crossing. So it's in a very, very strategic intersection. This is a picture of the existing facility. It's called the In-N-Out Convenience Store. And looking north and south on Victory. 7-Eleven proposes to demolish the buildings that are there and to build the buildings facing Greenwood rather than Victory with the fuel pumps on the Greenwood side. One of the aspects of the site is that there's a very large tree on the property that's been constrained by previous development, and their hope is to save that tree and make it into a, we call it a gathering space in the zoning ordinance. Trying to do something a little special using the tree that's on the site. a little special using the tree that's on the site.
Will the frontage be facing Victory or Greenwood with the gas pumps?
Greenwood. So...
So if I'm coming down Victory, I'm gonna be looking at the side of the building?
Like the one on Victory Boulevard?
The front of the building is facing the gas pumps. The gas pumps are facing Greenwood.
I got you.
So, yes, you'd be looking at the side. Now, they are required to do glazing on both sides unless the ordinance provisions are changed before they submit site plans. That configuration essentially was done because it's a fairly constrained lot. It's a small lot. It's about 23,000 square feet. Normally, the ordinance would require 30,000 square feet. There was an item approved by the Planning Commission on this to allow them to reduce the lot size. As part of that, it was made clear that they had to comply with all of the other ordinance requirements in terms of buffers and so on, so...
Okay.
And again, they have agreed to conditions that the basic layout would be as presented and the building itself would be as you see in these pictures and in your packet. The Planning Commission considered this item, recommended approval 5 to 0, and there are conditions that are attached to your packet. One other piece. We did get some information on the investment and revenues. I shouldn't say revenues, but the income. 7-Eleven intends to spend about $1.9 million total on establishing this facility. Based on their estimates, they will sell $2.1 million in merchandise and approximately $1.4 million gallons of fuel. And that's based on their estimates at this point, their projections.
Okay. Let me just ask, probably more importantly than that, that boundary is right at the Newport community as well as the Cavalier Manor community. Have we talked to those Civic Leagues and got any feedback or concerns?
We notified both Civic Leagues. We have not had any formal or even informal comments from anybody.
Okay. All right, very good. Mr. Cherry?
Mayor, you actually asked my question.
Oh, okay. All right. Dr. Edmonds?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a heartache about the location of where that's gonna be, near the Cavalier Manor area. And I do know that 7-Eleven does sell beer, and we have enough gas stations in that quarter, I believe. And I think it will have some ill effects on the community, so I'm gonna have to vote against this one based on that.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moody?
Mayor, along with the residents, I was gonna ask, the church that's right in back of it, do they have any objection or do they weigh in on it?
There are actually two churches back there.
Yeah, that's true.
There's a Kingdom Hall.
Yeah. But one is literally right in the backyard.
We're required by law to send a notice to each of the adjacent property owners, which doesn't get very far away from any facility. We typically, as just a matter of practice and policy, go three and four properties deep, particularly when we get into residential areas.
Right.
There is a listing of the properties that were notified in your packet and the notice they received. I don't know whether the churches were on that list off the top of my head or not, but...
Okay. Okay, Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mayor. One I want to bring up, it's already a store there that sells beer. It's an older building, older establishment. It's a, I think they do repairs on cars. It's a hut.
Tires.
Tires, always stuff hanging around in front of the building. Am I in agreeance with singles? No, but I think for upgrade for our community, it's to be a better use. They're already selling beer there, so...
Ms. Randall?
One other thing, they didn't have nobody go against that planning.
Okay. No objection in planning. Okay, Ms. Randall?
My concern is, the community has come a long way in terms of enhancing and maintaining the quality of life that's there. And when you look at your entrances into the area with everything else that's going on, on that corridor, I just feel as if the community would be more septic of something in that spot that would attract to the residential areas that are there, rather than someplace that you're gonna have people walking in and out for other purposes. I don't think it would do anything to enhance the quality or the appearance of what the neighborhood is all about. And we have not had any problems in that area, and I would hope that we can maintain it. There are a lot of young children, teenagers, seniors, and everybody else in that community.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before I go to the next council person that wants to speak, there's somebody with a device up here that keeps beeping and making a lot of noise. Can you cut that thing off? It's very annoying. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't want to put him on the spot, but I don't see this Cavalier Manor Civic League president, but I do see Mr. Wright. I just wanted to know if he could...
Well, he's one of the speakers here that's gonna speak.
He is, because you're gonna tell us what the Civic League thinks about this?
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, sir. I was just gonna say, my intention is to support this, and most of that was based on the fact that, A, it's certainly visually an upgrade to what's there. It's gonna be a better product sold. And I have had an opportunity now to look on the list of who was notified, which includes, I'm sorry, I'm looking at this sideways, the, includes three churches on the list of notifications, and there was no negative comment at the Planning Commission.
Okay. All right, very good. Dr. Edmonds?
Well, there is a church there.
There is.
And if it were my church, I don't know whether the pastor himself has been asked this. I don't know. But if I were the pastor, I would vehemently object.
Thank you, Dr. Ed. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Mr. Jill Wright.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, City Council members, Mr. Rowe, City Manager, Mr. Wilson, Deborah White and her capable staff, the good Sergeant at Arms. My name is Joseph Al Wright. I live at 1451 Welcome Road in the City of Portsmouth Cavalier Manor section. They did come to our meeting last month. We had a joint Civic League meeting and Neighborhood Watch meeting. As you all know, we have a very active Neighborhood Watch. We've been in existence for 32 years, and we monitor everything in our neighborhood. These gentlemen came to our meeting and gave us a complete layout. We told them about the churches, and we also told them that we thought if they would not sell singles, it would be an upgrade to the neighborhood because, I don't know if he showed the picture of what's there now, but...
He did.
It's a, you know, it's a great improvement from what's there already, as we did with the Royal Farms not too long ago. The stipulation, as I stated, was that they would not sell singles on agreement with the other businesses in the area. And we monitored them, you know, to make sure they are complying with our requests. We have gone to the ABC Board on several occasions, although we realize it's a voluntary thing, but when you sell singles, you tend to have those crowds hanging around the store. Lights don't mean anything to them, you know. They'll just go around to the back where there's no light after they bum the money that they need to buy a single. So, in other words, the short answer, we didn't have any objections, and the body voted on it, the Civic League and the Neighborhood Watch, with the stipulation that they would not sell single beers.
Did they agree?
They agreed.
Okay.
And we also mentioned the churches. They told us that they have, didn't hear any response from the churches at all, and they did notify the churches.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
We don't want it.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Stephen Romine?
No. We don't have one out of the streets.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, and members of City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Romine, local attorney. I'm here tonight with some 7-Eleven representatives, Ronnie Bernal, Derek Hopkins, and Gary Franks. I want to thank Jonathan Hartley for his report as well. I'm gonna be speaking quickly because there's a lot to cover. I want to thank Jonathan for his report, as I mentioned. The parcel consists of a 26,000-square-foot parcel at the corner of Victory and Greenwood. It is an existing convenience store. It does sell alcohol today. It is a fairly small operation. They took out the gas tanks quite a while ago. There's still a canopy there. So as you heard, 7-Eleven intends to spend about $2 million to upgrade it. And I think you have pictures in your package. The one on the screen here, I think, is very indicative of what we're gonna build. All brick, limestone features. The front will face Greenwood with a canopy situated like you see, brick-wrapped canopy supports, and then another front on the Victory side, so it looks very attractive. So I think everyone will recognize that it is an upgrade. The thing I would mention is it's in a heavily commercial corridor. Even though it may be at the entrance or gateway of a couple of communities, it is on Victory Boulevard in a commercial corridor. We met with Newport, no objections there. We met with Cavalier Manor. They did make some mentions about restricting the sales on single serves. We had no responses from the churches at all. Planning Commission heard the matter, voted unanimously to support at 5-0. As you can indicate, right now, there's several other entrances on that parcel. We're gonna close the entrances closest to intersection and just use the two entrances further away from the intersection. We're gonna preserve the specimen tree on the lot and do tremendous upgrades with the landscaping, the lighting, and the equipment. That's all in the package. I'll reiterate that 7-Eleven is a good corporate citizen and significantly contributes to employment in Portsmouth and supports a substantial tax base. The expected increased retail sales will enhance tax revenue for the city. It'll upgrade this corner, we believe, increase values, and will be a catalyst for other development in that corridor. And I'll just mention the Royal Farms that's being developed at Freedom and Victory, which is right down the street. That was approved late last year. No restrictions on alcohol sales in there, as the city attorney indicated. That's a matter that comes before the ABC Board and is really the appropriate place to vet those concerns. Again, we met with the communities, and we believe that we've addressed their issues. The staff is supportive as well. So in conclusion, the conditions are acceptable. The ones that are in your package are acceptable, and we've worked closely with the staff. We would appreciate your support tonight, and we ask that you'd approve UP1414, and I'm happy to stand by for questions.
So you did agree with the Civic League on the singles?
We agreed to consider the restriction. We have not agreed to do that. I don't have the authority to do that.
You agreed to consider?
Yes. And that's a corporate decision that I'd have to, you know, run up the flagpole. So, yeah, I don't have that authority. But we certainly heard the concern. I guess to address that quickly, it's the question you raised earlier is whether there's a citywide application of that. And that's our concern, is we don't sell them, everyone else does. So it puts us at a disadvantage.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Any other question? Ms. Randall?
As a recommendation of being a resident in the community...
Yes, ma'am.
...they're very much involved with it. I think we need to make sure we get a clear handle on what it is that the residents are looking at. We have worked very hard to maintain the integrity and the dignity of that community, and we've been able to do that. But for something like this to come, as close as it is to some of the faith-based locations, and you know there are several around in that corridor, I think we need to look at the perception that would be there to the entrance into the community and go through and really canvass the community. Several people who are also faith-based oriented would have problems, or if there was some way to restrict the hours and the sales that they would take place in the community. We've seen what has happened in other communities around the city, and I think we'd rather be safe than sorry.
I think they said there were no responses whatsoever from the churches. Is that correct?
Correct. Not to my knowledge, yeah. And I think Jonathan would confirm that as well.
Okay.
We didn't get any communication at our church.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Romine, the gentleman with, he's from corporate, right?
Yes, yes.
Can he respond to the request from the Civic League?
I believe Ronnie was at our meeting, and he heard that concern. I guess the dilemma of the box that we're in is our competition. We're happy to support the limitation.
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes or no that Ronnie?
Can he respond?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ronnie, you wanna come up? I'm sorry.
Honorable Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, my name is Ron Bernal, 1404 Bayberry Place, Chesapeake. Mr. Vice Mayor, in response to your question, I did attend both the Cavalier Civic League as well as the Newport Civic League that was about one and a half weeks prior to on Saturday, as I am the real estate rep representing the corporation here in Tidewater. And I attend as many Civic Leagues and planning and City Council meetings as I can, of course. And we do hear this very frequently. There are certain locations, as you all have indicated here earlier, where it does behoove us, our image, and the community to restrict single sales. And in those particular instances, we do. I will say those instances happen to be in locations that are embedded in residential communities where there are no similar competitors that we would be concerned with. At this particular location, we do have that, the Royal Farms. So restricting single sales beer, really, it would be a nice gesture to the community, but in reality, all it would simply do would be to drive that element looking for, seeking a single-serve beer to our competitor. So from the business aspect of that, we are opposed to that. From the aspect of supporting the community, we're all for it. If there were, if someone were to put forward an ordinance restricting single sales within the corridor itself, and it would have to be lengthy because there's competitors south of us that sell single-sales beer as well, we'd be fully supportive of that, no doubt. But we have to look at it from the perspective of free enterprise and the impact. It would have zero impact on the community relative to single sales, because Royal Farms basically would get all of that, all of that element. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Can I ask Mr. Wright to come back?
Well, yeah, I was gonna do that, but let's wrap up with these and then we'll bring him back. Mr. Moody? Well, there's one additional element in that corridor, and that's Tidewater Community College. So you've got churches, you've got colleges, you do have the residential factor as well. Let me pose this to you. You keep mentioning Royal Farms. Obviously, they're not open yet, so I believe there's time to make the same request, and I think we should. If they would also agree to it, would you agree to it?
I would say if they were to agree to it, and just south, I know there are two other competitor convenience stores just south of it.
I'm not worried about south. I'm worried about the Greenwood Drive and right on the corner of Greenwood. Would you agree to it if they will voluntarily do it as well?
That would, that would probably move us towards that direction. I really would have to take a look at the competitors in that area and take a look at their, you know, what they, how close they are, et cetera. So that is the closest I mentioned. It's easiest to us, literally almost across the street, probably have better access to TCC than we do, even though we are on the western side of Victory Boulevard. But that's why I just keep on, you know, throwing that name out. And they're going to be brand-new, sparkly, you know, very attractive. People are going to want to go in there. But I would take it back. Yeah, I don't hold the decision myself. I'm merely a conduit to...
Before the second reading, if we can contact them, and I think it's gonna be important, if we can say that, hey, the 7-Eleven is amenable to it if Royal Farms is, can you call those in your company that you need to speak to and get back with us?
I can absolutely assure you, I will contact the operational folks.
That's all we can ask.
That... That would, that have the decision over this, and certainly if Royal Farms, you know, didn't do it, then, I mean, there are many stores in Norfolk where we don't sell single-serve beers, and they're successful stores.
Sure.
So...
And in fairness, and in fairness to you, we did not do that with Royal Farms, and we probably should. So, to do that to these folks and not do it to Royal Farms shows it right. We can do something across that area and try to get an agreement across that area. I mean, because that is your competition. You are standing up this store for that very reason, and so we need to make sure you're on both plan, level playing fields and, but you would agree, if they would agree, and we could probably do something later. And I think the attorney has said it's volunteer, and they do have it in certain areas. That is a high-traffic commercial as well as a dense residential on both sides. So, it's, it's right at the crossroads of both of those things, but...
And thank you for pointing it out, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, very good. Okay, thank y'all.
Thank you.
And before we go on, I did want to bring Mr. Wright back up just to make sure. Was that a clear understanding, sir, on the Civic League's part that they had agreed to consider?
That was the only way we approved this thing.
Okay.
That they would have to do it. And if necessary, you know, we will go to the ABC Board.
Okay.
You know?
Right.
Because if I'm not mistaken, we had the same restrictions on the Royal Farm that they don't sell singles. And, of course, that's not directly in our neighborhood, but we do have, well, we do have one store in that corridor that sells singles.
That's right.
We call it an outlaw store, you know, but we are trying to do something about that, too.
Right, right, right.
But the other stores in there, you were monitoring them, and they're not selling singles, right?
They are not.
They're not selling singles, except for that one store.
The one store.
That's right.
The outlaw.
And that's right next to the church.
Right.
You know, and the pastor of this church, you know, I think I told you all before, before they started their services, they had to go out and clear all the beer cans and beer bottles and wine bottles and things before they started their service. And that's one of the reasons we approved Royal Farms, thinking that Royal Farms, when they open up, will take care of the outlaw store.
And clean up that mess by, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 14-14. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 1414.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Contral Devitt, and I reside in Newport. I reside actually right across the street where the 7-Eleven would be built. And in all honesty, we need something in that area. We need something to clean it up because it is a brand-new community with a very nice TCC built there, but all around it are those very convenience stores like we saw in the presentation. And I would like to know if 7-Eleven, because I'm on advisory board for Newport and I'm also on the Neighborhood Watch for Newport, I would like to know if they would consider offering free coffee to police officers to get some more traffic there if they are allowed to bill there. That would be one of the concerns that I would have, and if that will help this process go on, because if we block them here and they have three other locations all around, then actually, we're not really benefiting the community. So, if we can build some relationships now and some partnerships with high-class companies, I think it would be a better business for Newport and the surrounding area. I don't know if they're willing to address that now, but I think that would be ideal. But we are in support of the 7-Eleven.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor?
Yes?
City Councilmember, my name is Ricardo Watts. I have siblings that live in Cavalier Manor as well. They can come to my house or my siblings' house to get free coffee. But seriously, I don't think they should have it. I just think it's, we have enough convenience stores there. They're building, it's an insult to the churches that's in the area. We're going to have enough winos looking for a drink at any given time throughout that neighborhood. My father used to own 3301 Wilco across from the Portsmouth Fire Department, and that's all you have there now. People are drinking, drunk, people getting jumped and robbed. So, my suggestion is to vote against it until they can come back to you to say, "We're going to sing singles," or "Sell singles." And until that happens, we can push this back until they can come back, ensure that the public, the people, the schools, the little kids, the little, the infants, they're not around there. They're not seeing all that bad stuff that's going on. So, they're old enough, grown enough, to make a decision to come back and speak to their corporate, and we can postpone this decision until they can come back with the answers that we need.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Councilmembers, seeing no further speakers, this public hearing is closed.
Okay. And we actually, we're going to have two readings of this. This is the first, and I just wanted clarification for a couple of people that thought this would be the final bite at the apple. Mr. Moody?
Mayor, I was going to just say that, you know, a lot of times, we can say we'll make it contingent upon the voluntary participation in restricting the sales of singles, but we can't do that because that, the attorney just said that that's an ABC decision, not a council decision. But with that said, we certainly plead to you to get approval from Southland, and I think, Mayor, I think that we're in agreement to have staff do the same thing to Royal Farm and make it a contingent on both of you doing it. Obviously, we can't tie one hand if the other one's not doing it.
That's right.
But I'll support it just based on that effort.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, ma'am. I just, like, for the record, I, when Royal Farms was being considered, I voted against that as well.
You opposed that. That's right. You were consistent, sir. I was about to bring that up because we have to be fair, and we, and you were consistent. You opposed the Royal Farms, and we moved forward with it. So, you're exactly right. Yep. Mr. Cherry?
I guess I'm third in this motion. I guess I'm third in Mr. Moody's motion. I think we need to move it on this, tonight, and so to make sure we get the opportunity, do they have the opportunity to make those enrolls in the next 30 days? And if they don't, then we, you know, we do what we have to do in 30 days.
Right, okay.
Two weeks, excuse me. It won't be two, this is fast track, so it'll be two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Ms. Randall?
Just a point of clarification, so this will be delayed for a vote.
No, no, no. We're going to vote tonight.
We're going to vote tonight.
Right, and then we're going to do it again at the next meeting, this, the second reading.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Members of Council?
Excuse me. Members of City Council, you're voting electronically. This item is approved 5-2. City Managers' Report 14-385, Adoption of an Ordnance Accepting a Grant in the Amount of $80,433 from the Virginia Department of Social Services and Appropriating Said Funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for Use by Social Services Clients to Obtain and Retain Employment. Vision Principles, Neighborhoods and Sense of Community, Quality of Life and Lifelong Learning Community. Electronic roll call, we have no registered speakers.
Please take that. Okay. Second?
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-386, Adoption of an Ordnance Appropriating the Sum of $28,156 in the Other Funds Grant Fund. Portion of the FY 2014-15 Education Fund to Fund Security Equipment Upgrades. Vision Principles, Quality of Life and Lifelong Learning Community. Electronic roll call, and have no registered speakers.
Move adoption.
Second?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-387, Adoption of an Ordnance to Increase the FY 2014-15 Operating Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools by $1,761,812 and to Appropriate Said One-Time For Employee Compensation. Vision Principles, Quality of Life and Lifelong Learning Community. And I have registered speakers.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
Well, what I was going to ask, Mayor, in the salary aspect, we've heard from bus drivers that they've been left on the short end of it. And I guess I want to hear, maybe some of the speakers will share that, what's in store with the bus drivers. Understand they're having a difficult time retaining them, and we're losing some to other cities, plus we're short. So, obviously, their financial situation needs to be addressed as well.
Well, Chairman Bridgeford is going to come up and speak, and hopefully, he'll be able to answer that question. And right now, first on the list, Mr. Chairman, you can come right on up. Come on up.
He's here up here.
Thank you, Mayor Wright. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor, Chair, members of Council, I'm James Bridgeford, 2002 Sawgrass Lane, Portsmouth, Virginia, on the school board and currently serves as its chairman. I would like, I'll be very short, and I will try to answer that question, Councilman Moody.
Thank you.
But I want to do this first. I'm up here mainly because on the 26th of September, we sent to you after we approved it, a resolution requesting that this same amount be returned to us so that we could use it. And we have specified that we wanted to give our employees a 2% raise. I pass to you a couple of charts, and the first one is the best one we've got. And that shows that Portsmouth is ahead for starting teachers. If we weren't, we probably wouldn't be getting them, to be honest with you. We tried to get the cream of the crop. We offered the best starting salary around. It's only one problem. After three to five, they're gone. We've invested the funds, invested the time, invested the training, and other divisions pick them up. Why? Because after that first chart, the average teacher's salary in this area, Portsmouth is at the bottom. We're at the very, very bottom. The charts, we changed them around so it'd be a little bit of bar graph in it, and you can see it real clearly. But if you go to our website and read, the definite figures are there, and you can see what I'm talking about. The principal salaries for mid-range regional comparisons, we're the lowest in the regional again. So, we're lower in the principal salaries and the teacher salaries.
Yeah, they changed colors.
Changed colors, yep.
Now, the last page is a comparison of the region. It's only one thing wrong. That's current. The figures you're looking at are old, so we are further behind than what we realize what you're looking at. So, to try to explain it very simply, we understand you don't have the capacity. That's what the letter told us on what you're voting on tonight, to give us funds to give our teachers a raise or to give our employees a raise. When we give employees a raise, we give them all raises that includes the bus drivers. And yes, we are one of the lowest-paying ones. To answer your question, Mr. Moody, we have a committee that has been formed of administrators, bus drivers, and other employees that are trying to wring out these inconsistencies that the bus drivers had. My understanding is the majority of them are fixable without money. That's the good news. The other part is we have to try to fix it with money, but it's our bus drivers as well as our custodians and all our employees. To be very short about it, the city gave their employees raises this year and somehow met the capacity. We're asking for them to try to meet that capacity for our employees.
And, Mr. Chairman, you're showing here on your last page that you hand out the comparison of the regional pay raises, and everyone in here is giving a raise except Portsmouth and Hampton.
And that is correct, and that's what I was getting ready to say. We're the only ones besides Hampton that did not give a raise. So, we're that much further behind as we go into the next year.
Understood, thank you.
So, we understand.
And just be mindful of what the city of Hampton did last year. They put a huge effort out and went to the public, and the public agreed to give that additional funds, not only to their schools but to the other things because they wanted it.
We understand.
And so, that's probably why they're relaxing this year because they did a big push last year. I mean, it was way above all the others, so...
But the deal, but the deal back with Portsmouth, we feel that our employees deserve a raise. They're not city employees, but they are employees within the city. And I think one of the best things that was said, and if you all have looked at our tape, the search team is looking for a superintendent. Portsmouth is one of the better places to live. Our employees are dedicated to the children. That's the one thing they found. And even though they make less money, they are bound and determined to do the best they can. Morale, moral, and finances, those are the three issues they say we have, and we're trying to settle them.
All right. Thank you. That was a very good case you made, and I agree wholeheartedly with you. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chairman, you know, as we talk, and I talked with some of your colleagues on the school board, we totally support you giving the raise. I think we all do. We just want to make sure, and since this is re-appropriated money, you've had it, that you're going to program that into your base next year so you can ensure that you can continue with the raises.
The only thing I can say, Vice Mayor, and this, we just, we just got this today, finance person, and we sat there today to try to interpret what, because we had asked for it to be put on the agenda, but the way it has been phrased is, has been recommended that we give it as a bonus. I guess the question is, if we give this as a bonus... That still hasn't covered the real problem that we have because the bonus doesn't wave towards the VRS for retirement, and most people work for this retirement thing, and so it will count.
Well, we can't, we can't, we can't mandate that you, that you give them a bonus. But what I'm, all I'm saying is, this is, this is unspent money that you had, that we appropriated this year, that we are re-appropriating. So, you would have at least the same amount of money next year that you programmed this money for the continuation of the raises for next year, for the following year.
Understood. I understand where you're coming from. But we want to, we want to make sure that we get this on the table. I understand where you're coming from.
You understand what I'm saying, okay.
We need the money.
Yeah.
Okay? I'm not trying to give the money back to you. Don't get me wrong.
I'm trying to give it back to you, so I want to make sure you're going to leave it in.
We want it, but we want to make sure that it's, still the understanding is there that we need raises for our employees.
Yeah. And we, and we have no intention of cutting you $1.7 million next year. We just want to make sure that you can get the same money next year, that you reprogram it, to make sure that you keep it in your base so that these employees won't get a raise this year and not have money to give them one next year. That's all.
Okay. All right.
I believe we, I appreciate your comments, but we need to make sure that we keep these salaries competitive and that we do the right thing by all of our teachers and all of our city school employees. And so, Ms. Simmons?
You know, I worked real hard in 2008 and 2010, raised taxes to put more money in the school system, to make teacher salaries competitive, and it works. And the schools' scores dramatically improved, which is all I have to base it on. And I'm absolutely ready to reappropriate... And I'm absolutely ready to reappropriate this money back to you tonight. But I have a hard time understanding, we can't tell you to give raises to your people, and you've given money back. You've had money left over at the end of the year into the millions of dollars in the last five years. So I don't understand why you didn't, the school board, didn't appropriate that money into salaries for your people. You've had ten and twelve and twenty million dollars left over. I don't understand why you haven't done it, and why you're fussing at us. We can't even, it isn't until this year we've appropriated money in categories. So, I mean, I want the teachers to be paid the highest in the region. That would suit me fine. But I can't make that determination. That's yours, not this body's. And I'm really confused.
I would respond to that, but I do not have all the figures of where the money was, CIP and this type thing, which would not fit the category. And I'm not prepared to rehash that, to be honest with you.
Okay. I mean, this is...
And I understand what you're saying.
This is not part of our budgeted money for us. This is your overage you gave back. Now, we're giving it back to you, and we're recommending that you use it as a bonus, just like we just did for our constitutional employees, because that wasn't budgeted for us either, and it's a recurring expense. That doesn't mean that, to me, maybe the manager will correct me, that our allotted money for the school system in next year's budget is automatically increased by one point seven six one million. That's not it. It stays where it was until we start building a new budget. So I don't want you to think that your money's already gone up and you're all ready to have more money for next year. That's the danger of not making it a bonus.
Yeah, I know better.
Okay. Maybe we're on, we're in the same book. We may not be on the same page.
I think we're on the same page. Just a different way of getting to that page. I think we're on the same page.
I mean, I want you to give the teachers a bonus and a raise as you can, absolutely. And the bus drivers and everybody else involved.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, as we matriculate with this categorical funding, and we start to level out where different revenues and expenses are in those categories, I think we're all smart enough to make sure we bake in the number and the salary piece to make sure that we continue to be able to support this raise. I'm in favor of the raise. I'm not in favor of a bonus, because I think they need it, and I think they well deserve it. But we've got to be creative in our financing and making sure that we support those things in the out years.
Mayor, should we, you know, out automatically, to find them one point seven million dollars in their budget, we can do it. We can do it this year, next year, and in the years to come. I don't think that's a problem.
With the categorical funding, and as the numbers level out, we ought to be able to do that. And so, thank you for your comments, sir, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Moody?
Well, the only thing I was gonna say to my colleague, Ms. Simms, is I think what she was saying, that normally when y'all come to us, we don't give the raises. We give the money. So I support them too, but I support it as a suggestion, as a strong recommendation. But getting back to the school, bus drivers, the custodians, usually when you want to slow walk something or kill something, you assign it to a committee. And I hope this is not going the committee route.
No, this is...
Because you've got a problem there. Because I attended the bus drivers meeting out in City Park with some people in this audience. And there's a serious problem there that needs to be addressed, because kids have got to get to school safely. We saw on the national news what happens when you get the wrong bus driver driving, and they're all over the interstate. But we have a shortage, and we don't need a shortage, and we don't need, we don't need kids getting home at six o'clock in the evening either, because the buses are having to double up.
I think you'll find, Mr. Moody, Councilman Moody, that Dr. Fisher is taking care of this efficiently, and there are bus drivers on this committee. It's not a slow walk to death. As a matter of fact, I understand, she gave me a list that a number of things they have taken care of. So her intent as interim to have this problem solved, and I think she gave me a date of something like January completely, maybe it's self money, the money woes. But I understand it's moving along pretty nicely.
And for full disclosure, my wife has been a school bus driver. I think she drove for fifteen years, and she's a monitor now. And believe me, a monitor doesn't pay the mortgage in the Moody household, or the car payment, or any of it, if you're familiar with what a bus monitor makes.
I understand.
So I just want everybody to know that.
Well, we're trying to move all our employees up as you fund us.
Sure. Ms. Randall?
You know, this brings back, what I said, deja vu. When I came on this council, we were fighting, trying to get things in for the schools, getting the funds and the supplies and everything else. That was my motivation for running for city council. And I've learned a lot as a result of being on. The thing is, we need to make sure we take care of our needs. We say that we believe that children are our future. Then we need to make sure that whatever it is that the schools need to ensure that the children are prepared for their future, for whatever it might be, we have given them the revenue to take care of it. And if what we are giving is not sufficient, we don't know until you report back and let us know what your needs are and which areas you are having a shortfall in. It really disturbs me that I see us going backwards at this point, because we are right at the point now where you're asking for funding, and we've already heard there's no funding. So somewhere, I think we need to come back to where we were, come together and sit down and talk about it so that we could all be on the same sheet.
We got a joint meeting coming up at end of month.
And we need it. We need it.
And we'll have the agenda. I think it's only gonna be two items, maybe three.
Yeah, not too many, not too many. Okay, Mr. Meeks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're moving forward. I think we put a big push last year for y'all's budget this year. I think the lines of communication are a lot better than when I first joined here. I think everybody here is in favor of this money. I think what we all want to keep everybody in tune with is the two billion dollars shortfall from the state. I think that's the nine hundred pound gorilla in the room, is what's coming down the pipe. We can't tell you what to do with your money. Only thing we can do is make sure going forward, if you give those teachers raises, it's a reoccurring bill every year that it continues. And I think we have a joint meeting coming up. I think that'll be discussed. And I think we'll keep providing for our children like we have, and that's it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, before you take your seat, on your first slide here, under the starting salaries for the teachers, as you noted, that we are doing a great job there with getting those out, but retaining them after that three to five year period. Do you have any information on what the other cities in the region are doing with that starting salary, or did you even track that?
If I know Assistant Superintendent Hees tracking, it's just that I don't know he has, because he's pretty good at giving me figures when we ask for them. I don't know if he's going back and tracked the newest figures or not. I told him what I needed for tonight, and I got the information. And I know that's good information, because most of it was pulled from VSPA.
Very good. So is there any conversation amongst the school board with creating the salary increases by not touching this initial first starting salary piece, and making sure that we compensate and work into these other areas to get the average up? Because if you give it to the starting, will you continue to have a huge starting? Have you had that conversation, or maybe we can do...
Like I said, we just found out about this tonight, and it wasn't worded exactly like we had it. So I'm sure that discussion will come up next, our next meeting, day the twenty-third. And we meet with you the twenty-eighth.
All right. Thank you, sir. And thank you for what you do.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Steve Carroll?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council staff. Steve Carroll, three one one two, River Woods Drive. Let me refresh council's memory on the grand jury report on the school board's fiscal policy. This is from findings and conclusions. Conclusions: The school board and its superintendent were therefore able to develop a scheme by which they could build funds into the school construction fund, which they would otherwise not have had available for use. The Portsmouth School Board failed to return funds to the city. The school board and its superintendent have taken the position that there was never any significant surplus or unexpended funds to return to the city. This special grand jury specifically finds that a large portion of funds the school board claimed were encumbered, were in fact not encumbered to the extent claimed, and therefore funds were required to be returned. The school board, the failure of the school board to return these funds to the city with a request for reappropriation, et cetera, et cetera. As appropriations to the school board constitute one of the largest single expenditures of city funds, their duty is to ensure that those funds are being handled as required by law, the responsibility of the city council to the public at large, and the students, parents, and employees of the schools in particular. Legal requirements regarding excess funds, law, legality, credibility. This school board lacks credibility. And I find it hard to believe at all, after what we have been through, where fifty-two million dollars was illegally appropriated or inappropriately appropriated by the school board over a five or six-year period. I don't find their request credible. Now, in full disclosure, my sister drives a school bus. I would love to see her get a raise. They don't make a whole lot of money. Maybe the school board could knock off some of the overhead on some of these high-paid administrators to pay for those school bus drivers. More power to them. I'd like to see them get a raise. A definition out of Webster's College Dictionary, nineteen ninety-five edition, "lie," something meant to deceive or give a wrong impression, to convey a false image or impression. A grand jury eviscerated this school board for its dishonest fiscal conduct. They lied to city council. They lied to the public about their fiscal needs and how they were spending precious taxpayer dollars. Let me give you a heads up, ladies and gentlemen. Full-page ads in the currents with trumped-up accolades, endorsements from political hacks, don't cut it. It doesn't cover the stench of this school board's past fiscal conduct, nor does it hide this school board's failure to properly manage its funds and efficiently use those funds. And I would suggest you scrutinize this request much more carefully. You have continually given them money back. I would disagree with you, Mr. Cherry. You're not cutting them if you don't give them the one point seven million dollars. You're giving it back to them. There's a big difference. This is extra money. I would agree with you, Mrs. Simms, to coin a phrase. This is excess funds from money they don't need. So now, all of a sudden, they need another one point seven. You just gave them six million dollars. The Commonwealth's attorney looked me and three other citizens in the eye and told us, after the fifty-two million dollars, "I promise you, this won't happen again." That was ten million dollars ago. Ten more million dollars that we've had to wrangle from them because they did not voluntarily return it. If it hadn't been for the city manager, we still wouldn't have gotten it, probably. You know, we need change. We need to clean house. I was at a candidate's forum this past weekend, and I was impressed with three female challengers who have a genuine desire to help our kids, who demonstrate integrity and honesty. And that needs to be brought to this school board.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Good night.
Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Adalde Kucherovski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. Let me address my first comments to Councilmember Simms. I think she has the years of tax rate hikes incorrect. In two thousand eight, what was boosting the school board budget was the money that was coming from APM terminals. And so the high tide was lifting all boats. Unfortunately, two thousand eight was also the year of the housing bubble bursting. And the following year and the year after, property values in the city, especially for residential properties, started to implode. At the same time, when council had been giving tax cuts, tax rate cuts, because valuations had risen so dramatically, they could pretend to give money back to the citizens, when in fact, there were revenue increases even with the givebacks. Two thousand eight, that came crashing down. And the school board experienced reduced funding from federal and state sources as part of that collapse. But I digress. Let me deal with this offensive paragraph in the reappropriation ordinance, or the reappropriation explanation. So the manager's statement, or management's statement, is, "I recommend that city council request the school board to use the reappropriated funds for one-time bonuses rather than raises, which incur an ongoing cost," just like the city did this year, right? No, the city did not give bonuses to its employees. They reappropriated money that was left over from the prior fiscal year and treated it as though it was going to be continuing revenue. So your actions speak louder than your advice, because in a fiscal year of flat revenue, you made an unsustainable decision to give raises to city employees. Then you took it further, because this is an election year after all, and you imposed the seven-dollar increase in vehicle registrations on all of us. The reason people haven't complained is, you won't see it until you get your tax bill next May. And so you, and your churches, and other institutions that have vehicles to register, will have that imposed. But one council member, Mr. Cherry, goes around saying, "But we didn't impose a tax increase." No, it's a fee increase. Tax, fee, tomato, tomato, still coming out of your wallets. So for you to sit there and recommend to your brethren on the school board that they not give their employees a two percent raise, when you've given city employees a three percent raise under similar circumstances, is hypocritical. The other thing is, in going back to Councilmember Simms, the reason they return money, the reason they have leftovers, is they don't have a bottomless cookie jar like council does. It's called the general fund and the fund balance, although it really isn't bottomless. Because when you expend unappropriated or unbudgeted money, three point six million dollars and two million dollars at a time to buy properties that were not... at a time to buy properties that were not planned for, you get precariously close to the policy level, and then all the rating agencies will be breathing down our necks. And Mr. Meeks is right. You have another shoe dropping soon when the shortfall at the state level sorts out and you end up scrambling to fill the holes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. Pat Simons, Mimosa Cove. The school board issue has been very close to my heart for several years now, and I really don't see anything ever being resolved until a lot of those school board members sitting on the board have been replaced. So, we just need to concentrate on that because that's where the answer lies. There's a paragraph in the school board 2014-15 budget which states, "The superintendent and the school board, as conscientious stewards of the public trust, study population and student trends to formulate a financial plan. They plan expenditures with a view toward reducing the overall cost associated with public education as much as possible while providing the very best educational experience for our students," or, to quote the school board mission, "while focusing on excellence." We all know our Portsmouth public schools are a long way from that, and we need to make changes in order to make that school board mission even feasibly possible. I understand the school leaders gave their employees a 2% raise last year. In their budget, they have this 2014-15 budget, they have a list of items that they did not get to fund because they complained that you did not give them enough funds to do that. The first item was a 2% salary increase. Number two was 26 additional instructional assistants, slant reading specialists. Number four, 27 additional teachers. Number five, 18 additional operations support staff. Number eight, tutoring. Number 10, increase substitute pay to the regional average. Are any of these items, I mean, to me, teachers and instructional specialists are kind of important too, along with raises. I mean, in our economy, it's still not that great. Do people, does everybody here get a raise every year? Not the ordinary worker that I can tell you about. Have you witnessed any of the recent school board meetings? I occasionally view those, and all I hear is how there's this moaning and groaning going on because the city council refuses to fully fund them. That's all they gripe and moan and groan every meeting. "We're not fully funded. It's that council. They won't fully fund us." And, I mean, what excuse do they have to be saying that? I mean, they keep coming up, especially since you started doing this by category, they're always returning money. How can they say they're not fully funded if they've always got money to return? On top of the $92 million they misappropriated? I mean, it's, what is the answer here? I am amazed that the misappropriation of taxpayer dollars has been trivialized by our elected officials as, "Sorry, mistakes were made. It won't happen again." One cannot help but wonder how Mr. and Mrs. John Q. Taxpayer would be treated for such mistakes. They would no doubt be thrown under the carnival ride. You know, taxpayers take offense that elected officials do as they please with our tax dollars, and they answer to no one when they violate state law and city codes. Illegal or not, they knowingly violated the law. Accountability is the issue, and school money must continue to be appropriated by category on a quarterly basis to ensure there is never again room in the future for misappropriation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-388, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $76,595 from the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance and Appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund to support the Circuit Court Drug Court Program, Vision Principle, Change, and New Directions, Efficient Responsive Government, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-389, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a drainage easement to the City of Suffolk along a portion of Prudin Boulevard, Vision Principle, Efficient Responsive Government, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-390, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a regional consent order with the State Water Control Board and 12 other Hampton Roads localities to address sanitary sewer overflows, Vision Principle, Efficient Responsive Government, Electronic Roll Call, and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. New Business, 14-391, Boards and Commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, Members of Council, the personal committee has the following appointment and reappointments this evening. New appointment would be George Watkins to PPIC, and the following reappointments. Americans with Disabilities Commission, Darlene Mueller. Historic Preservation Commission, Rusty Long. Library Board, Jennifer Powell and Preston Vaughn. Museum and Fine Arts Commission, Dante Owens, Anthony Riley. Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Flossie Bridford. Southampton Roads Disability Service Board, Veronica Burns and Angela Hayes. Supplemental Retirement Board, Susan Burton and Matthew Crutcher.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 7-0. 14-392, items submitted by council members.
Thank you. Let me be very brief. I've got quite a few thank-yous and attaboys. First of all, let me thank and give a big shout-out to the Port Norfolk Civic League for last weekend having another successful year. They have a 5K run. They call the Booyah 5K Run, and Little Monsters, those are the kids that come out and dressed in costumes, and they run about a mile, and then there's a 5K run/walk. The mayor walks. And this was their third year, very successful year, and I want to thank the Civic League and all of the surrounding communities and the corporate sponsors that participated. It's getting bigger and bigger every year. Also, this weekend, Park had a 5K walk for Hope, and I see the executive director back there, Ms. Annie White-Gurten. How are you? Great job. Thank you to all of our community organizations and fraternities and sororities and our churches for coming out and participating. I don't know what the total count was, but we had, we had three of our council members, Cherry, Moody, myself, who else walked on the 5K? Was that it? Us three walked on the 5K? It was, again, as I share it with all of our volunteers there, that God loves a chill forgiver, and we smile, and we give, and we participate, and we, we help those in need in the Portsmouth family, and you and your organizations do it over and over and over again. So I want to thank everyone that came out, and for all of the ones that didn't but always are participating. As you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and hopefully we're all wearing our pink in some form or fashion to show our support. I want to thank all of our churches. This last Sunday, there was a great number in the city of Portsmouth that had a pink out, and it was great. I went to several of them, and each one of them, Thirpe Baptist Grove. Grove had the big chair out there. I think the goal was to raise $20,000. Don't know if they met that goal or not. They did meet that goal. Yes, they did. Well, there's Grove. When they say they're going to give away $20,000, they give away $20,000. That's why they had the big chair out front, right? But no, thank you for everyone and that support because it is about more birthdays. And lastly, the Coast Guard last week had what they call a Missions Day, and they invited quite a few people from headquarters, Washington, D.C., that's within the Coast Guard, that don't actually see the day-to-day operations and the things that go on that comprise what our men and women do in uniform. And they also invited several of us here on council and in staff. I participated, the manager, two of our deputies, Nita and Brandon, and it was well-done. To be able to see what those men and women do every day, from commanding control center to operating the buoy tenders, to all of the other things. We actually toured one of the cutters, and to see all of the different things, and the drug bust, and the operations that they do to protect our shores. I want to thank Admiral Dean Lee for creating this Missions Day. He's the new commander. I think most of you know Dean. He was here as the fifth district admiral a few years ago, and he just came back this year as the Admiral of the Atlantic District. So I want to thank the Coast Guard based Portsmouth for going all out and making sure that the community, as well as its own leaders in Washington, D.C., understood what they do. It was a fabulous day. Ms. Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I always have to talk about what's going on, so I'm going to wear two hats today. The first one is just to talk a little bit about Halloween. I'm going to defer most of these comments to Tony Goodwin, who's going to tell you about a lot of the downtown activities. But to remind, we have movies at the former Portside location, we have movies at City Park, we have haunted train rides at City Park, we have all sorts of activities at the Children's Museum over the next two weekends for Halloween, and of course, the great pumpkin challenge, carved pumpkins lit up on the High Street Landing site of Portsmouth and the downtown waterfront in Norfolk, and we're going to try to see who has the larger number of lit carved pumpkins on Saturday night, the 25th of October. You can go to portseveaevents.com to see an entire list of activities, some of which Tony will share more details with you later. Take that hat off and put on my Economic Development Authority liaison hat. We have a very exciting morning tomorrow morning. We're all going to need to get to bed soon. At 06:50 a.m. tomorrow morning, October 15th, we will have the ribbon-cutting for the new Kroger Marketplace store at Turnpike at Frederick. Store opens at 7 o'clock tomorrow morning. I want to remind you all, it was October of last year. We had the gold shovels turn dirt and applauded a $21.5 million investment by Kroger to build a 124,000-square-foot marketplace. It's not just groceries. It's clothes, it's jewelry, it's wine and cheese pairings, it's a sit-down café, it's a chef who provides culinary instruction.
It's gas.
It's a little bit of everything. And then, of course, the fuel center's already open, and if you haven't been down Frederick Boulevard in a while, the gas is under $3 a gallon. They also have a community room in the store that is named the Icy Norcom Room. They have been, Kroger Company has been named by Forbes Magazine as one of the companies in America that provides some of the largest percentage of donation of their corporate profits, and they've already partnered and are going to make some partnership grants tomorrow morning at the ribbon-cutting. So, we want to welcome, Terry Lucas is the store manager. We want to welcome Kroger to our community and invite everybody to go out and shop. It's interesting to note, they anticipate that they will have sales of $1 million per week at that store. It's a lot of groceries.
Well done.
And that gas is $2.96.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to digress to this Walk of Hope, you know, for excellent calls, I got to say this, and they're not racist, but I got stuck with a bunch of younger kids, and so the competitive spirit in me, I was walking pretty fast, and I did pretty good. And as we got close to the finish line, I could see coming in first in my vision. If I knew these kids, I would get closer, and they would sprint. So I tried a couple of things. First, I said, "Hey, your shoes are untied. They didn't fall for that." And I said, "I think you dropped something." They didn't fall for that either, Mayor, so these kids are pretty smart nowadays. But it was, it was a lot of fun.
It was.
Well, they had the good things. I got the punch list. Some things we need to make note of. One, Cavalier Manor Tennis Courts. At the Civic League meeting, that issue came up, and I'm very pleased to announce that the manager made council aware today that construction will restart tomorrow. So, hopefully, you can get that pile of asphalt and the rocks that the kids have been throwing out of the way. Also, Tony Goodwin and Sean Pierce, I think, from Park View, made me aware there are a lot of, they call them rogue poles. I think they're poles we're seeing around the city. If a car hits a pole, Dominion Power used to replace it with a new pole. Now, I see a trend that they, they doubling it up, and the end result is, it looks awful in the community. And I see more of it in Portsmouth than I do elsewhere, and I'm looking for these things. So I gave a list today to Bernadette Hogg to get with Dominion to see what they can do about it. There are also some in Churchland and other parts of the city as well. Also, the pavement from the other Kroger in Churchland, and we hope to keep that Kroger, in that area is awful. West High Street there is just, needs some pavement on it. It's real bad. And the other issue, dog parks. I think we have enough experience to know where not to put a dog park, but that doesn't mean that we don't need one, and we do need some dog parks in the city. So, Mayor, if you, in agreement, I would like to charge staff at some point in time to come back with some recommendations on where we could have some dog parks. We've got a lot of dog owners that need to get out and exercise the dogs, but we certainly don't want them across the street necessarily from somebody's house. And that's about all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Okay. Very good. And before we get to our non-agenda speakers, let me, let me, first of all, Elizabeth mentioned the volunteerism and the contributions that Kroger makes nationwide, and they are the number-one grocer. But Dr. Edmonds, in our last week, attended the re-grand opening of Farm Fresh out in Victory Center, Victory Village. And Farm Fresh just reinvested about $1 million in redesigning the layout of that store, and they did a huge thing in the community. They had a representative from each one of our schools. I think we had someone there from Douglas Park. I think it was about three or four elementary schools, Wilson High School, and they gave, and I don't shop, so I don't know what points are, but they gave each one of them 10,000 points. And I was waiting this $3, but I, I don't know if a point is a dollar, but they gave each one 10,000 points, and, and they related. So I'm sure that equates to something. But... So I'm sure that equates to something. But want to thank Farm Fresh, and we want to thank all of our businesses for recognizing. Farm Fresh actually had their national president come here to Portsmouth, and Bishop Edmonds and I spoke with her, and some of the corporate VPs that also came. And they're very appreciative of what we're doing here in Portsmouth, the sales that are going on in that area. And they were very pleased to come in and reinvest in that. And I'm sure if you ever tried to get that fried chicken out of there and see that line standing out of the door, you'll know why. They're very pleased. But with that, and lastly, I want to say, this Friday night on the football field at the great Woodrow Wilson High School, I will be out there with the class of 1954, celebrating its 60th anniversary of that state championship from the Woodrow Wilson class. I thank our treasure, Jimmy Williams. And that crowd's going to be there, and boy, we're going to hear some war stories. But, so Friday night, if you will, come out to Woodrow Wilson High School, so we can salute the 60th anniversary of the state champions of that class of 54. And then finally, I saw our Parks and Rec Chair walk in, Ed Brown. I want to thank him. I think last week, or the last couple of weeks, he's attended several Civic League meetings, going out, talking about our Parks and Recreation, the survey, the site that we've purchased, the input that we want from our community. I want to applaud him. Where is Ed? I told him, Ed, I want to applaud you for what you're doing. We really want this civic engagement. I can feel it in your words and your message when you're speaking, whether it's on social media. We want the entire Portsmouth family to weigh in on what they like there. And I've got feedback from the survey that it doesn't allow me to say other things. Well, call Ed and say all the other things that the survey won't allow you to say, because we want to hear it. This is vitally important that we get this right. And as I share it with, and my comments, we don't have an endless amount of money. So the money that we are going to spend over there, we want to make sure we're doing it and getting the biggest bang for the buck. So Mr. Brown, and to that Parks and Rec, for all of what you're doing. I think we had a tour Saturday. I don't know if it was, was it Saturday we had another tour over at the, the facility?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So thank all of the citizens. Please get engaged and stay engaged, because this is vitally important. And Madam Clerk, let's get to our speakers. Oh, Mr. Moody, you got another one?
Yes, speaking of that.
Your shoes are untied. Yeah, you dropped something.
I would, I would probably fall for that. I was on the tour, and I want to thank Mr. Brown and staff for organizing. Unfortunately, it wasn't very well attended on the segment I was in. Maybe it's something we could even put together a virtual tour, film some insides of the building, so we can post that online, if that's, if that's feasible. I know a lot of people just can't drop what they're doing and get out there and spend an hour or two touring, but maybe a virtual tour would be good.
That's a very good idea. Mr. Brown's done that, right? That's a good idea. Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Okay. 14-393, report on pending items. And Ms. Bernadette Hogg?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Bernadette Hogg, City Embusman, and would like to give you the report on the non-agenda speakers and pending items for the council meeting on September 23, 2014. There were 11 non-agenda speakers at the council meeting on September 23, 2014. One of the speakers required action by staff. Al Holmes was concerned about the type of gate installed at the entrance to the first watch neighborhood. He would like to have a gate similar to the others in this area. The gate currently installed meets the requirements of the current city code. The road where the gate is located is private. If the residents are not in agreement with the type of gate that is currently installed, then this matters between the developer and the residents. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Okay. 14-394, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Linda Ridenhour.
Speaking of those famous Woodrow Wilson High School classes, how are you, Ms. Ridenhour?
Fine son, student. Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, and council members. I have been real excited to be here tonight, to share something that I wanted to give Parks and Recs and Ed Brown. A little bit of the steam has come out by sitting through the meeting, but nevertheless, I think you have a sheet that I have passed out. But I visited the center a couple of weeks ago, and I know there's a lot more renovation and beautification, but that place has got the possibilities of being a state-of-the-art community center for Air Portsmouth youth. There's so many different things that can be done there. I was recently at an urban education conference, and one of the sessions was this V post. It's Virginia Partners for Out-of-School Time. And it's an organization that's been operating maybe two or three years in Virginia, with a real concern about the quality time after school, which oftentimes has a greater effect on young people and positive behavior than being in school all day. The organization, you can see the mission statement, to foster a statewide group of agencies from different cities, and help promote them, develop them, provide resources. I think they even help to write grants for things that you might want to put in your facility. They will come to your city. And I think on there, on the sideline, they have four or five other community centers throughout the state. You can go on their website and listen to and see these other community centers operating. And I just wanted you to have the material, and especially Mr. Brown, as the community citizens for this committee are working on this facility, you know, they might find some brainstorming ideas by looking at this website or, or reading the materials, because we really need to provide the most excellent, different kinds of activities that are going to motivate and inspire and make our young people want to come there every day after school. I know that's a process, and I know we have to be patient, but I'll probably keep coming back to see where you are on renovating and beautifying not only the outside, but the inside of the community center. It's going to be a real star and air crown for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And you're absolutely right. The opportunities are endless, and we do want to make sure, not only are we trying to create a state-of-the-art center for today, but what our children will be looking for in the next five to 10 years, so it can continue. And not only our children, our seniors and all of our citizens, but it's got to be that place that stays relevant in our community. And so thank you, and thank you for this information.
Mr. Ted Lamb?
Good evening, members of City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city employees, as well as citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Ted Lamb, and I live at 301 Allen Road. I come to you this evening to speak as an individual school board member, who is grateful to serve the citizens of Portsmouth. I am not officially speaking on behalf of the school board, so what I'm saying tonight is from me and me alone. This past August, the school board had their annual retreat at Victory Elementary School, and it was requested that the principals of each of our schools to be present, but also to submit answers to certain questions that we had asked of them beforehand. After receiving and reflecting on the information submitted, I was able to, to draw some conclusions about what makes our successful schools achieve. Successful schools that have active PTAs are achieving at high levels of academic success. This is why I am before you this evening. I have, through social media, as well as through the school board meeting, I've put out a call, if you will, of our citizens to join and get involved with a local PTA. Other community leaders have, have listened. They've called me, again, through social media, just to let me know that they have joined a local PTA, and they have started to make a difference in our schools. One does not need to have a child in school to become involved in a PTA. I did not know that until after looking further into this. Since I have put this out there, I've had many other people that's already called and said that I didn't know, and they want to get involved. I now stand before you to take that same challenge with me. I am asking that you would join a PTA and commit to one hour a month outside of the monthly meeting to make the school of your choice more successful by volunteering in some capacity through that PTA. I personally have joined Brighton Elementary PTA, and intend to join others as well. Furthermore, I have said, and I will reiterate again, that I am willing to walk with any PTA board who wants to do a door-to-door active campaign to increase memberships, in which some PTAs already have expressed an interest in doing. In our city, we have approximately 1,500 members across the city, for a school district of about approximately 14,000 students. The goal of this idea or initiative, whatever you would like to call it, I would like to see us to get up to 2,000 members by the end of the 2014-15 school year. I do think that that is very achievable at this time. I am asking that you would join me to make our schools better. Hopefully, in near future and so forth, I'd like to be able to come back and give you more of a progress status report of where things are. And so thank you for listening to me, and I will answer any questions that you may have, or at the appropriate time, any questions that anyone in the audience would also have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb. PTA dues, how much? Is it $5 or $2?
That, that varies from the school. The most I've seen is $5, and I think I've seen as low as $2, $2.50, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that reminder. I've been a part of the PTA at Hodge's Manor, and I haven't joined in the last couple of years. My company, you're right, you don't need to have kids there to join the PTA. And that's a very good idea, and I hope you're successful in reaching that goal.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to applaud Mr. Lamb, and although my daughter graduated out of Portman Public Schools in 2010, I'm a member of Emily Spong PTA in Hodge's Manor. And I think it is $5, Mayor. I'll take it to you next meeting.
All right, there you go.
Thank you.
Mr. Moody?
I didn't get it yet.
Mr. Moody, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I support that idea too, Ted. That's a great idea. Is the application for the individual PTAs online on the school board site?
I believe what you can do is look at the individual school itself, and then there's a link for PTAs, and then you can get directions from there. Worst-case scenario, I mean, it's not bad or worst-case, but I mean, we can always contact the school itself.
All the schools have PTAs?
19 of them, yes. Usually, the preschools, except obviously for Emily Spong, would not have a PTA. But preschools are very unique and different in that arena.
Okay, great idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yep, well done.
Mr. Bruce Lallande?
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, council members. Bruce Lallande, and I'm a '71 grad of Woodrow Wilson High School. I'm here to talk about the Frederick Military Academy property, Cochran Home Property, Pine's Treatment Center property, and how it relates to homelessness, which is where I'm paid at, and the challenge that we have right now within the homeless community. About nine months ago, we came to you with our 10-year homeless plan, the End Homelessness Plan, and said that we were, we are on track. And we have accepted the challenge within the city of Portsmouth to end homelessness and to provide, at least divert homelessness for those folks who are in need. And we have come in the last two years, from 330 people that are of homeless status, and that's from the PIT count that we have to do every February, down to 160 in this past year. The 25, 30 agencies that form the Portsmouth Homeless Area Coalition have worked hard to partner with you to end homelessness. And when you have a 7.2% unemployment rate in the city, it is a challenge, and we want to get there. Just recently, I've received calls from the mayor and Vice Mayor Cherry, not only to do more for the homeless population, but also for veterans. And you have committed to us, and you've committed to a lot of folks, that we're going to get on path with the Virginia Coalition to end homelessness, to end veteran homelessness by 2015. So we have a sense of urgency. On the 19th of September, Mayor Wright signed a proclamation that ended, Kenneth I. Wright, I, Kenneth I. Wright, do hereby join the mayor's challenge and commit to end veteran homelessness by the end of 2015. So we do have a timeline. Also, the Virginia Coalition of Homelessness has asked us to end all chronic homelessness within the city of Portsmouth by 2016. We need your help. We need the dormitory at the treatment center. All right? I don't know if it'll solve all the problems. I don't know if we can absolutely get to zero, but we're going to give it a shot. We've proven to you in two years that we can do that. We need to consolidate our resources. We need to work closer with you, so we can get away from all the alphabet soup of organizations that we have in the city of Portsmouth, and give those homeless clients a shot. I also took the tour this Saturday. I was absolutely impressed by the properties there. Growing up as a boy here in Portsmouth, the Frederick Military Academy was very near and dear to my heart. It did a lot of good for us, and taught us a lot of discipline, and neighbors that I had a lot of discipline. And the tour itself talked about the 33 acres that were there, and the goodness that was going to be delivered by the 33 acres. But we only saw about five acres. And they're all associated with recreational facilities. I also took the survey. There's about 26 questions on the survey, and 25 and a half of them talk about recreation and the facilities in the city of Portsmouth. And at the very end, it gives you a little block that says other. This is a serious thing that we're dealing with those homelessness. It's a serious thing that we're dealing with the kids to try and find them a community center. I'm recommending to you that while I appreciate, as Councilman Simmons talked at the last council meeting, we have some great folks on the Park and Recreation Committee. And I think they'll do a great job as it comes to the recreational facilities. But you have an opportunity right now to do a lot more with the total 33 acres. I don't want to admire the problem. I don't want to talk about the problems of what we're going to do in three or four years. You have given us a challenge that in 14 months, we have to end homelessness. You've committed to that, and we're going to solve it. You've committed and also signed us on to end homelessness within the city by 2016, but we can't do it alone. I'm asked that you elevate, whoever's looking at the, the treatment center property, the Frederick Military property, has got to get out and be more broad as far as the input that you get from the citizens. We want to sit at the table. Those 25 agencies that represent the homeless, we want to be there to help solve that problem. And that's what we're asking for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I want to thank you for your, your continued work in this area. I think I called you about a month ago. I met with Admiral Harvey, who works for the governor. He's the Veteran Affairs Secretary here for the state, and talked about his V3s program and some of the things we could do. We chatted then about some of the possibilities. I think I called Mr. Joe Wright and some of the others to talk about some of the ways that we can, we can work together. That, we need to put that in the box of things, of possibilities that we can do there. But you're right, we, we need to act, and we need to take this matter seriously. And I think we have, but I think we're trying to get our arms around all of the different types of dynamic or fluid situations, dealing with our homeless, especially our veterans, and, and some of the things that it could be sustainable, that, that, that would, I don't know. We talked about some of the mental issues, some of the other things that some may, may not come. I mean, all of those. And they fall within the same categories as anybody else in, in those classes. But we want to do what's right. We want to do what's right with that facility, but also with our veterans. And so thank you for what you do.
Mayor, when you, when you sent that challenge to us, sent it to me, I immediately went out and talked to all those organizations who would be stake and talked to all those organizations who would be stakeholders and asked for their commitment and their head nod. All the veteran service organizations I've talked to and given a copy of your proclamation, the disabled veterans organizations, the VFWs, the American Legions, I've gone out to talk to. I went out and talked to the Ports of Redevelopment Housing Authority, the Park Commissions, the PCOMP Commissions, the Ports of Volunteers for the Homeless, the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, the Southeast Virginia Community Foundation. I've talked to church leaders, and I've talked to civic associations, saying, "The city is committed. I want your head nod so we can move forward." We want to move forward, but we need to be at the table in order to make a difference.
Very good. Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Turn my mic off, there. Thank you, Mayor. Bruce, I think it has potential. We talked about that Saturday. I agree with you. For the 10-year plan that the city signed onboard to end homelessness, we're doing update on that. And the only trouble with a 10-year plan, it's easy to get lost within it with other things that you're doing day-to-day. So, Mayor, we need to get an update on that, where we stand, driving around the city. In fact, we've got a multimillion-dollar apartment complex, and right now, the residents can stand on the balcony and view homelessness themselves. And the problem, we hear a lot about the problem during the wintertime, when the conditions are bad. The weather gets warm, we all tend to say, "Oh, it's not bad, they're outside, the weather's great," but it's not great when you're living under a bridge, or when you're having to find a place to bathe and that sort of thing. The Pines also has a full-service equipped kitchen that might even be able to be utilized in that capacity. There may be grants and things for that purpose. We need to explore those things, and might help get some of our homeless problems taken care of in the city, but most importantly, we needed an update on where we stand in that 10-year plan. Also, you mentioned veterans. The state code allows the city of Portsmouth, just like it does other cities, to give 100% disabled veterans one automobile where they don't pay car tax on it. We have not done that. In this upcoming budget, I want us to do exactly that. We need to join our sister cities in doing what the state allows us to do. We're not talking about, you know, thousands and thousands of 100% disabled veterans, but we-
That's on the agenda this year.
But I know it is, but we, a lot of things are, but we need to make it a priority. But thank you again, Bruce.
Good. Mr. Cherry.
Give me a second, Mayor. I was just going to say, you know, Bruce, Mr. Lillande, one of the things I'm proud to serve is that a citizen called me one day, asked me about that property, and, you know, I brought it back to my colleagues, and now we own it. Being a combat veteran myself, I understand, and, you know, but for the grace of God, that would be me that you're trying to help. So, I am 100% in. I just spoke with the manager while you were talking and asked him to get on, well, let you get on his calendar in the next week so you can share your ideas with him on the facility. And I think if we section it off right, of course, we would have to separate it, you know, from the youth and make sure there's no conflicts there. But if we figure that part out, I think this is more than doable. So, I'd ask that you would call the manager's office and to get on his calendar to share your ideas with him, and that we continue this conversation so we can make this happen, because there's no reason we should have homeless veterans in the city of Portsmouth.
Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, as well as our city manager, city attorney, and city clerk. My name is Tony Goodwin, and I reside in the Parkview section of the city and also serve as your business association president for Old Town. So, let me restart. Good evening. We're talking about fall events in Old Town and welcoming everyone to join us for what's getting ready to happen on the weekend of the 24th and 25th of October. I have retired the Halloween pumpkin shirt, as you saw, because we're getting ready to put it on the waterfront. We'll talk about that in just a moment. But with that being said, we'd like to say that starting off the evening's events, as Councilwoman Simmons has already alluded to, is the 34th Annual Ghost Walk, a very proud tradition here for Portsmouth and run by, very well by, the Old Town Civic League, bringing probably thousands of folks into the Old Town Historic District, sharing true and not-so-true stories of history and how things have kind of come along in the past right here in our fair city. That evening, of course, will start with tours, starting around 7:00 from the Trinity Courtyard and going on into the Old Town Historic District, and tickets, of course, can be purchased along with information available on either Portsmouth VA Events and the Old Town Ghost Walk website. The next day, which we're excited to say we're a part of, along with the museums of our downtown area, hosting the Museum Madness programs, where there are going to be games, special events, costume contests, entertainment storytellers, things that are all driven towards the family environment and bringing folks down for a good cause and giving an entertainment value that I think is second to none for the Hampton Roads region. And finally, of course, the day's events could not be topped off any better with both the Great Pumpkin Challenge that is going to be held along the waterfront. Mayor, I understand you're probably challenging our mayor across the pond there about getting more than he will have, but we'll at least have the biggest one, I guarantee. We have a 12-foot-up pumpkin that's supposed to be popping up along the High Street waterfront right there at the foot of High Street, so look forward for that. Then, of course, the Old Town Safe Trick or Treat. This is our 13th year, and we're very proud that the torch was passed from our founding member of the Old Town Business Association, Ms. Sandy Harris, who has retired and gone to the beach. We keep the memory alive in having a fun event for many, many families of both Portsmouth and also of Hampton Roads. And not to spoil the list of entertainment, but I can guarantee you that from last year's event, which drew thousands upon thousands of people, and also that we did pass out probably close to 2,500 pounds of candy, one piece at a time, we actually shared what we can do in Old Town and be competitive with our regional town centers, as you may say, because we are the regional town center, and things happen in an area like Old Town that make it a proud, shining moment for the whole city. So, we'd like to say to everyone that you can find more information live on not only the Portsmouth VA Events listings, as Ms. Simmons had said, but also, we are doing a Old Town Portsmouth Halloween Facebook page where a lot of folks can share their photos and their memories on that page, as well as catch up on some of the new and upcoming events. But we thank everyone who makes this event happen, the city of Portsmouth by first and foremost, also, all of our members of the Old Town Business Association and supporters of our special events here in Old Town, but we could not do it without the collaboration and the joint venture of the Portsmouth Police Department, the Fire Department, EMS, and also Sheriff's Department, because we totally agree that safety is in the best interest of all of our children, and this is where they can come and be in a safe environment. There will be plenty of our Men in Blue and also in fire hats and probably the trucks and everything else right along High Street to share the experience with everyone. So, thank you for the time, and we look forward to seeing you on October 24th and 5th.
Okay, thank you. Good job, Tony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Clyde Toler.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor, Member of Council, Mr. Whitehead, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Wilson, Good sign, 1029 Blair Street, Portes, Virginia, Parkview Section. I see some sad faces up there. Maybe I can brighten it up a little. I must say, the streets say, "You ghosted Elizabeth. You told the truth about that school board. Rest of you better join her." Now, I tell you, to all you bus drivers, you want to raise? Hey, come to work tomorrow and don't ride a bus. Stand outside, get your union, get together, and they got all that money, make them give you the raise. You, the council, can't tell them to raise them. They got the money, they won't raise them. And I'm sick of seeing my tax money being messed up with this school board. The election coming up, hear me, citizen, get rid of them. Stop that school board. We don't need nobody running for this council that come in here bringing us bad things, some of them in the head, bad behavior and all. We don't need no radical peoples on this council. We have had enough of this. Stay out the paper and leave Mr. Thomas alone. Leave him alone. And Mr. Thomas, you take a good picture, but leave him alone. He's doing this thing, which he was told to do. He worked for somebody. Now, I'm not an auditor, and I would like for him to look into for me, like that Willett Hall, Spode Hall of Fame up the street, this tent thing you got over here, and also the Realsun Hotel. Let's find out where our money is going. Now, is he getting too close to somebody, trying to protect somebody? You're trying to muzzle him to shut his mouth? Now, whoever linking what goes on in a private meeting at this council, you should be threw off this council. Don't do that. I was in Raleigh. When I came back, I had all my papers, and I see all this. Stop making us look bad. We had enough of that. Let's stop that. And I'm sick of seeing these school board members come up in here with all this mess that they bring before you. They need to stop it. Where is the superintendent? You got an acting superintendent? I want to see them up here and not no chairman. He do not tell her what to do. Let's get her up in here. But we need to get together. Now, Mayor, for your part, there's what, 12, 11 of you up there? So, that's 1,100 pounds. Now, y'all 45-pound lighter. Now, I can brag about, just see there, you can see his collar, look at it, you can see his neck right there, sleeves. I said, I'm going to pick on you tonight. I told you, I wasn't, didn't know. But anyway, you're doing a good job. Stay with it. You can do it. Just put your heart to it and do it. Leave them snakes alone, if that's what you ask. But anyway, Mr. Rowe, I say to you, now Carver's Home, that place by name, Carver's Home, I know because I came in, that's what it used to be, I used to run the women's order. See, I know. Then, next thing you know, it was a military academy, right? Now, the pine. Don't let no civic league or nobody name that place after nobody that's dead. We don't need that. We don't need to name that place after nobody that's living. Let's make this thing Portsmouth Community Center or anything, but please, because if you do, you're going to make people mad in Churchill, Portsmouth, in downtown Portsmouth. You're going to make Parkview mad, you're going to make Craddock mad. So, don't name this place after nobody, name it something for the value of the city. Please, get together and let's stop all this and leave Mr. Thomas alone. Mr. Thomas, if you keep on mugging, you tell me what it's all about. I'll come up here and, citizen at home, you know it's time to vote. And I'll be caring about nine of you to vote, and I'm not going to tell you who to vote for, but you members that's coming on that school board, you better stand up and let's get some of these people's change so we can move on in this city and stay out the newspaper. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Good night.
Our final speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 12. The United States of America shall be a republic. I saw in the registrar's office a bookmark stating, "We are a democracy." After I heard several people stating that we are a democracy, I thought I needed to educate the public about what a democracy is. Democracy is the next thing to socialism, which is another form of communism, community-ism. Government reimbursed loss, damage, or penalty to someone for what he has lost or never had or never earned. The government is an elite group that thinks they are the solution to all problems. They think they are responsible for the social ills of society and need to protect the people from themselves. A democracy exists when certain voters vote themselves generous gifts from the public treasury. These majority voters always votes for the candidate promising the most benefits from the public treasury. The end result, democracy always collapses because of the loose fiscal policy. The collapse is always followed by dictatorship. The average age of the world's greatest civilization from the beginning of history has been about 200 years. During those 200 years, the nations always progressed through the following sequence: from bondage to spiritual faith, from spiritual faith to great courage, from courage to liberty, from liberty to abundance, from abundance to selfishness, from selfishness to complacency, from complacency to apathy, from apathy to dependency, from dependency back again to bondage. Democracy can be explained as two wolves and a lamb voting on what to have for dinner. Or a political system calculated to make an intelligent minority subject to the will of the stupid majority. Democracy is a mob rule, form of government, giving the impression of pre-representation and rule by the citizens. But today, it is ruled by a Crown of England, Crown Templar, and the Vatican together paving the road to socialism. Here are some examples to compare a democracy with a republic. A democracy centralizes power in the legislators. A republic decentralizes power and gives the power to the people. A democracy centralizes power in the government and to property. A republic decentralizes power and property belongs to the individual. A democracy believes education is the primary responsibility of government. A republic believes education is the realm of the parents. A democracy is where people decide right from wrong by a majority vote. A republic is where people make laws that agree with God's law. A democracy sees our country as part of a one-world government. A republic believes in national sovereignty, the United States of America with boundaries. A democracy believes government is responsible for the social ills of society, and a republic believes in family, community, and private solutions. One of the social ills of society that makes up democracy is codependency of the individual. Codependency has a web of characteristics: low self-esteem, people-pleasing, reactivity, caretaking, controlling, obsessions, dependency, and denying. Low self-esteem, feeling you aren't good enough to compare yourself to others, controlling, limits our ability to take risks and share our feelings, bossy. We tell others what they should or shouldn't do. Being bossy is a violation of someone else's boundaries. And denial. There you have it. Democracy and codependency go hand in hand. Let's remember, we are a republican form of government with God-given rights to govern ourselves. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Good night. We adjourn.